Okay. Right. I'm. If. Oh.
It was just a few comments, but he didn't call me and ask me for any. No, I just, I, we, we, and it was just during just general discussions. I mean, you'd think if he was gonna write an article about it, he would've called me up to ask me about it, and he never did. I was shocked when I saw that there. Because I really couldn't say much. I just said, "We didn't have any details yet, that no one was working on it, we didn't know where it was gonna be, what time it was gonna be, but we were changing the date from this date to this date because we wanted to be able to talk about what we had done, not what we were going to do." I know, but it could've been such, it could've had such a better spin.
Oh, I. But.
I saw her. No, I didn't see her. I was at the, at the Oasis Awards, but I don't think I saw her. I don't know, I, that's why I have not said any, that's why I, I just talked about, uh, we were changing. I, it's her show. I just agreed to what she wanted to do. I told her it's her show, I'll do whatever she wants to do, I'll leave her to it, too, so I was fine with those. And she has some good points about why to do it, so I was fine with it. It's, it's, it's Chamber of Commerce event, not a city event.
This, but, yes.
And nobody's on.
Councilwoman phone.
Yes, how are you, Councilmember Roberts? Sent you a little thing last night.
I mean, this, oh, no, I know, I had to write, you wrote me at dinnertime, I already had dinner plans, it was already well.
Well, you could've come over and had a drink.
Honey, I didn't even see your text, I was in the middle of dinner.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, 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 no, I didn't see it until I left.
Yeah, we just decided on the way back.
So that's why when we, when I was, some people, you know, the date was changed.
Yeah, yeah, he, he had sent me a text that you guys were going.
And I said I didn't know what the menu was, I didn't want the details.
Yeah, did you get all your stuff picked out?
Well, we did some of it picked out, but I'm feeling rushed, you know, and I don't wanna be rushed.
And phone instead.
Hi, I'm David Vogel.
Well, okay, yeah.
He says we're the most, we're the most difficult client.
I was just gonna say.
And they always have to have two or three inches talking about the scandal.
He said you're the most difficult, and I said, "I get it, I've worked with those two."
And the painting.
It really is like two people who haven't met sometimes.
You're picking out glory, you know, for an entire.
Oh, no.
Just, you know, that's something you walk in and say, "I like that."
Hello. I'm turning off my phone.
You're not living there forever.
I know, but.
You may never even move into it, knowing you.
That's true.
You may never, your feet may never touch that carpeting.
That's true.
Hi, how are you, John, John?
How's John, huh?
Good, good to see you.
He is coming, okay. We, we write that in.
Hi, Eddie, how are you? Good to see you.
Chris Lucko, you need to get a life.
Our first one, a milestone event.
If you are sitting in our budget here, you need a life.
You saw I forwarded that email. Hi, John, how are you? Your first email from. Oh. They should know better than to.
So Jeff's gonna, Jeff said we have a short phone hold on, he's covering this up. I'll talk, of course, I've gotta digest 200 pages of a document I haven't opened yet.
I don't know, I, if it's, once it says attorney, I don't touch it.
Ever was.
Yeah, yeah.
So must, from.
Because we're looking at.
But I don't know where Jeff.
Oh, thanks. I don't, the lawyers, I don't get their own.
Because we're looking at our PDD, because we're the.
No. If you have a legal issue, you go to counsel.
Because we're reexamining our PDD.
Makes sense to me.
So I called him and I said, "I, I need to comment on this." No, they weren't even gonna bother talking to me on it, who started that process of the rewrite. So Jeff's gonna grace me by talking, because she guilted him into it, that he doesn't wanna have to deal with the fact that the later say, "We never got a chance to respond." They're kind of, Judy Deetrack's driving the story.
Oh, you dear. Ronald Reagan got in trouble over that one, so you're too young to remember that.
We had a star group completely reexamined, and we're getting recommendations, right? To fix the PDD process.
Sorry, I'm looking, I was just trying to get my.
So first, Judy wrote her own 86 page, and so that's what it's all about.
Thank you.
Of course, blaming us, or blaming us at every level of ugly, every bit of ugly.
Yeah.
I didn't.
Yeah.
How's Pam feeling?
She's feeling good, yeah, she's doing good.
She recovering as quickly as you did?
Uh, actually, yes, she's driving and everything.
Oh, good.
This is too, the audience is too far back, I feel so.
They are, aren't they?
I feel so separated from.
You know, when we have the meeting about giving money to the various organizations and stuff, it's gonna be like the old story of the fish and the loaf of bread and.
Right, right. David? No, no, wrong David. But hi, David Vogel.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi, JR, how are you?
Hi, I'm Groovy.
You know, your friend Skip.
What's on? What are you writing?
It's your friend.
The other day on Main Street, they were talking about the state of the city coming, I said, "Oh, well, you know, I can't, I don't know the details yet, but the chambers ask us to move it from May to September." They wanna do this grand opening to downtown.
I think you'd be happy with.
One, two, three, four, one, two, three, four.
I told the group, I said, "This is a great idea."
I paid one of the waitresses to go and get me a paperclip and wrapped it around myself. And Martha has lost her voice a long time ago. That was horrible.
I didn't see, this comes for a while?
Yes, I've been listening to it all day.
Oh, well.
Yeah, and you know Manny, he's been appointing to the board, to supervise the proceedings.
No, no, whatever, but.
Today's a day of news.
She said that? That's pretty neat. So he's judging us.
What was it, does it sound like a show? It should've, it should've been Elizabeth Romero, though, it should be a woman, yeah. Yeah, I was secretly hoping, too.
You know better.
Yeah.
You know, but, but like I told Main Street.
Hasn't been a woman on that, on, on, since 40 years, over 40 years.
Been 40 years since Quirrell?
Yeah.
And see, I remember that, that's scary.
Yeah.
That long ago?
Yeah, it was 40 years. Yeah, they were, and they are, and, but there was a lot of trades done up in Sacramento.
I love all.
For votes. David?
Okay.
David?
Have they appointed somebody?
And when it comes.
Manny.
Oh, they did?
Correct, yeah.
When it comes to those numbers, I'm going to not address them. And if anyone there does.
She's raised 150,000, right?
David, you didn't say anything, you always forget which end it is, right?
I did, too.
It is freezing in here, number one.
Is this where we're gonna live?
And number two, could we change this for, with the meeting on Thursday?
I'm wondering if this is our house.
People are too far back.
For the next few months.
I mean, I feel like, yeah. I feel like it's so far away.
I'm sorry to dump all that on you, just as you were getting ready for this.
Can you have him do something now, because it's really cold.
Um.
He's trying to go over our heads, you know?
For this day, it's 92, and it's like 74.
I know, it's freezing. Where's your suit? Where's your tie and everything?
Number four, hello?
Well, I am so cold, I'm gonna leave, I'm putting my hands inside my, my blouse.
Hey, that's a city manager issue.
Amy.
Listen, she's on a mission right now. Please, I'm freezing. I had a, you know, the evening would start on Saturday, I gave, you know, waitress some money. So cold, so windy. It was horrible.
Oh, that was Saturday.
Yeah, Saturday night, it was freezing and windy.
Yep.
Uh, he's working on it, we went down to Anaheim yesterday, pick out tile and, oh, you know, the last time we did something, Dave, and you tied 24-person women. Can you send me her contact? Yeah, Joan Hager, I'm trying to look her up, I found her bill from the last time. No, it wasn't, I, there was no, I only found the check I wrote, so I couldn't find the bill. No, no, write it down. Oh, yeah, maybe, yeah, just get, text it to me, text me the contact, that's good. Do you want a bit? Want a bit, Mayor?
Oh, no, thank you, appreciate it, though. So are you gonna cut the ribbon for the new hanger on Memorial Day? Good.
It's not part of tonight.
What do you have, now?
It's gonna be in London.
Page 27.
Not missing accounts, I mean, this is actually our first trip since the election, so we haven't been anywhere for a while. It's gonna be nice to get out of town. Gets to be out of Davis Air for a week.
You're only going for a week? Go to Europe for nine days?
I'm not going to mention.
Well, it's, it's an order.
Right.
Same group of travel with them, doing New York and then London.
Yeah, no, I know.
I will actually address it when you bring it up.
Yeah, no, I really go for nine days, so it's a long trip.
Well, the museum trips, that's about all they are, usually. Say, one, two. Oh, there he is. What time is it? Time to start. Mr. Kors, you ready? And that's what Jenny said. David, are you ready? Okay, everybody, the microphones are live all the time, I guess.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, the microphone.
Now they are. They weren't a minute ago.
They are, Jeff, by the way, there's no buttons on the mic, they're live all the time. Said they were. Okay. Yeah, remember Ronald Reagan? Okay, I am calling to order the Tuesday, May the 9th, 2017 meeting of the Palm Springs City Council, along with the Measure J Commission. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Place your hands over your heart, give a plea.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our law, indivisible, and omnipotent.
Thank you, you may be seated. Ms. Hart, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kors.
Here.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Faut.
Here.
Mayor Moon.
Eager.
Here.
And I will do the roll call for the Measure J Commission also. Commissioner Bixson. Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Dada.
Here.
Commissioner Heritage.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Marshall.
Here.
Commissioner Williams. Vice Chair Hammond.
Present.
Chair Vogel.
Here.
Everybody's here.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as published? No moved, seconded?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the agenda as published, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, the, the agenda is accepted as printed. Okay, we have a joint budget meeting with the Measure J Commission, welcome you all tonight. And first, we will have a review of the draft fiscal year 2017-18 budget excluding city grants and sponsorships. Anyone who's here for city grants and sponsorships, that will be at a later date, we'll be focusing an entire evening on that. Measure J Commission recommendations and continued discussion and direction. Dr. Ready?
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council and commission. So, Mayor, what we thought we would do this evening, the first is start off with Measure J, they have a recommendation to make to you, and they'll have comments. And then, of course, you'll be able to ask questions of them on their report and have discussion, questions. Then, staff, we will give a brief review of the city's budget highlights, and you'll then obviously have a chance to ask us some questions. At that point, then, we would open it up to public comment for input. So we would like to do a start with the Measure J Commission, and Commissioner Vogel is ready to go, I believe.
Hope so.
Good evening, thank you very much, Mayor, and then, city, members of the city council. I think before I begin, I'd like to just give you an overview of what we're about to do. There are two parts to this presentation. One part has to do with capital projects that have not been financed, that we are making recommendations for, from Measure J funds, which have not been previously allocated. And I'll take you through those recommendations. The second part has to do with our community projects. As you know, every year, we have discussed the allocation of a million dollars with respect to projects that are either forwarded or brought forth by the community, or by members of other commissions. And so we have a theme, which has been ongoing for the last three years, which was called Traffic Hot Spots, it will be continuing into next year. But because those themes have to be researched, we are going to present to you the ideas that we would like to have some work done, so that when we come to fiscal year 2017, 2018, 2019, we'll be prepared to move forward on some other kinds of projects that have to do with community themes. Okay? So, there are two pages in your agenda that are relevant to this discussion. The first page is page 27. Page 27 is the Measure J funds that are spread across, it was called the multi-year plan. So you can see there's 2016-17, which was this year's plan, and 2017-18, which is what we're discussing now. 2017-18 has a projected revenue of 13,4, 13,400,000 dollars. And then there are costs that are already fixed against that, there's the bond, the cost of the bond. And then there are other costs, as you go down into this category, which are costs or projects that we have all been talking about year by year. Ongoing street repair, the Buzz, money previously allocated to the police station, money previously allocated to the downtown projects, all of which totaled 7.3 million dollars. When you take all of that away from the 13,4, it left us with approximately 2.6 million dollars to allocate to new projects for this coming year. On page, or the third page of the agenda, which is the page immediately after the two pink pages, you will see a list of capital projects that were presented to us through city staff, and the city engineers gave us a detailed presentation on each one of these projects. These were priorities that were brought forth to Measure J.
What page are we on?
It's the first page after the two pink pages. And you will see how Measure J Commission voted with respect to this group of projects. We only had 2.6, approximately, maybe 2.7 to allocate, and the voting allocated 1.7, which was the request for Fire Station 4, an additional 500,000 dollars toward the completion of the remodel of the police station, 300,000 dollars for ollards, which are objects that interfere with cars moving into traffic at the plaza during the Village Fest, and 200,000 dollars for two crosswalks that are in north, the north end of Palm Springs on Palm Canyon. I believe one is at Las Palmas and the other is at Stevens. That basically took all the money that we had that was unallocated for this year. These other projects, although all worthy, did not receive as much support as these first four projects. So these first four projects are our recommendations for the use of unallocated Measure J funds for next year. Any discussion or question? That's the first part of this presentation, it was very simple, there wasn't much money to allocate.
So, yes, I do have a question. So what, what happens now with the projects that did not receive that top priority? Do they still stay on a list and then you come back to them?
Yes, and these were last, every year they roll over, although every year, new projects are added. So these are, there is a, quite a bit of unfinanced capital projects, but actually less than there has been in the past, since we've been financing capital projects for the last four years, and this would be a fifth.
Councilman Kors?
Sure, just on a, on a question on, if you looked at the projects, and I think this is something you looked at, was there any discussion of allocating, not sorry, these, but in the community projects, money related to homelessness? This year, the council and our strategic plan put increasing revenue for homelessness as one of our top priorities for this year. And, you know, Councilmember Faut and I, who are in the Fort Worth Housing Homeless community, have been looking for revenue, have been seeking it from outside. And whether that maybe fits one of the community projects, but is there any discussion of that, or if your thoughts would be to have some discussion of that, given the high priority of the city?
I understand the question. These projects that we're talking about, which is the 2.6 that comes from the funds other than the 1 million dollars reserved for community projects, are infrastructure projects, or projects that are hard capital cost projects, you know, upgrading of streets and things of that sort. I do agree with you that conceptually, if we were to address issues of homelessness, it would ideally fit under the, under the category of community projects. There weren't any, what we did this year in terms of holding hearings, or holding open meetings about community projects, is that we had at least three meetings that were devoted to asking people from the community and from commissions to come into Measure J and give recommendations. And at that time, no one brought forth any ideas or requests for homeless, projects regarding the homeless. Although, at this moment in time, we're only speaking of themes and research on themes, so we could discuss, including that, if we wanted to, after you hear the presentation, on what projects we were recommending. But homelessness was not discussed because it wasn't brought to us.
Okay, and we can discuss that more when we get to that piece.
So I'm gonna turn it over now to the Vice Chair, can I?
I have some questions on some of the other stuff, but.
Oh, sure.
Your whole presentation first?
No, 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 if you wanna do capital projects first, I think it's best.
Sure, well, you know, in looking at the multi-year projects, I just wanna ask, I know the Buzz program is sort of a pilot, and does that get reevaluated at any point in time? I mean, it's like annual, you know, about 850,000 from Measure J, another 100,000 from the city through PS Resorts, it's about a million dollars a year, so. I know it's initially a pilot program, so is, is there any reevaluation of the funding of that? By Measure J? Maybe a little staff question, then a Measure J question, I'm not sure.
At this point, I think Measure J would and did assume that without its being asked to reevaluate it, that because it had been approved, and we had agreed with the city that we were doing it, and there was an ongoing cost, which we put into the multi-year plan, just in the same way as many other things, we were not, we did not reevaluate it.
Okay.
We could if we were, it was suggested, but we did not.
First staff question, was, I wasn't on council all the time, so is this a pilot program for a year, five years, 100 years, and what was the?
Well, as you know, there's nothing more permanent than a temporary government program. But when we did, when, when the council originally went forward with this, obviously, for all the reasons you know that they did, they, they wanted to do it as a pilot program, however, to, to make it work with the company that operates the buses, in essence, we had to purchase them, at least. So it was, it was almost, there was a disincentive to get out of it, I think, in the first three years, then we would have to make a balloon payment. But I believe it's after, Marcus, is it year four? Somewhere after year four, if council abandoned the program, I don't believe we would, the buses basically would be ours.
And when is year four?
Next year. But, but, but I think just to also finalize that, that question, it was a pilot program, and they did wanna reevaluate it, obviously, to find out ridership and, and those kinds of things, particularly now with what are the revenue possibilities, but it was originally set as a pilot.
So, just so I have an understanding, let's say we just decided we didn't wanna fund it next year, for argument's sake, I'm not suggesting that, and send emails. But let's say that is what we decided to do, what, some penalty for us, is what you're saying?
Uh, yes, and we can clarify what that is, but I think the, each year, it goes down, there's a penalty we would pay, but in essence, the city would then own the buses. And that penalty, I believe, Marcus, is it several hundred thousand?
Isn't this something that the subcommittee is, should be talking about, thinking about?
Well, it's being funded for Measure J, so I wanted to understand, I'm not against the Buzz, I just wanna understand it, because it's a million dollars a year out of our funding, and I don't know, about $5 a ride, so I thought it would be, if Measure J's continuing to fund it, I thought it would be good to get their input on it as well, but without knowing what the penalty might be. knowing what the penalty might be.
We can get that for you very quickly.
If I, if I could add, Councilmember Mills and I did have a subcommittee meeting just a week or so ago, and the discussion was more on routes and the effectiveness of the routes, et cetera. We didn't get into the budget issue. We felt that, I think we felt that was more of the council issue.
Well, we, we did manage into the revenue generating aspect of it, which we looked at some very interesting ideas for that, and so, so that has potential as well, rather than being completely funded. And there were, I think it's a, it's a presentation that the council is probably going to need to see coming.
Right. I believe the, the recommendations that the, that the marketing people made was about fifty thou, about fifty thousand dollars worth of potential sponsorships and advertising, et cetera.
There were, there were several different aspects. I mean, it was not going to cover the whole thing, that's for sure.
No, no, no way.
May I say it more as a tourism generation? Obviously, you know, I live on a route, so I do use it occasionally. And not to put you on the spot, but Commissioner Vada, sort of just the tourism person, do you see sort of the million dollar benefit? I mean, what do you see as the benefits, costs? Now, P S Resorts put some money into this as well.
Well, from my standpoint, and knowing that majority of the hotel's customers don't use the bus, and I'll give you the example of the Renaissance, the Hilton, the Hyatt, the Hard Rock, the Palm Mountain, the, the Las Briesas, and on and on, because it's much easier for our customers to walk a couple of blocks to downtown, rather than if the bus stops at the Hilton, and if my customer was to get into that bus, the bus makes several stops before it gets to Riviera, and at the Riviera, it's making a stop for another ten minutes. By the time it gets to downtown, that customer is sitting in the bus for about fifty minutes or an hour. It's better off for them to just go ahead and walk to downtown. So from my perspective, the buzz is primarily being used by the locals, and it's become a local amenity.
There's something, I agree, it's when the, when the subcommittee does a presentation, it is a big cost factor, and so it would be worthwhile, I think, to have the conversation. My other comment, just on the four projects mentioned, so the four, Phase One of the bollards and the crosswalks, which are sort of, get into that pedestrian traffic safety, that's not coming out of the community, pedestrian traffic safety, that's additional.
Those are additional.
Okay. And then, I know there's like another one point five million on the list for bollards, so is there maybe information we can get on what that whole project is, if it's such a high priority? So I know, and Councilmember?
I can.
Yeah, the, the, there's a need eventually to put those rigid bollards in at every street that connects with the Village Fest. We've been using vehicles essentially to, to block anyone who would purposefully or by accident drive a car onto Village Fest. So with the recent unfortunate incidents that have occurred elsewhere, beginning back with the Third Street Promenade accident in Santa Monica, we, we've been investigating these bollards, and so the first, the first project is, you know, addressing the real issue of mixing cars and pedestrians at La Plaza, which is why we prioritized that three hundred thousand. We have essentially five other locations at, you know, Baristo, Arenas, and the other streets that connect with Palm Canyon, which would, which is how we arrived at the one and a half million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Katsunakoros?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a follow-up question on that issue. So, this makes an assumption that the Village Fest will always stay there, and with one of the council goals being to turn Indian into a two-way street, potentially take some of the pressure off Palm Canyon, I can't help wondering if we might consider a move of Village Fest, or at least the consideration. So my, my only concern, in, in as much as I understand the need, and I'm looking at Stacy in the back, that we need these bollards, is that we're, we're making a decision that the Village Fest then stays there, and I think we should look at that at the same time.
I think in the past, there has been some discussion the Village Fest could potentially move into the new downtown section. And I was, this brings up something I haven't thought about in a long time. I know originally, when the downtown was planned, there was bollards for the downtown to block off those streets. Are those bollards still in the plans?
The, the bollard, the, the, the bollards are part of the downtown plan, but those are on.
You're talking about the new, the, the new museum way that meets with, museum way that meets with the museum, yeah. That one, yeah.
Museum and museum, yes.
For museum meets museum, yeah. Those bollards are planned. In fact, Councilman Mills and I have been having those ongoing discussions in subcommittee. But I, I do think we should look a little more closely before we make this investment, unless we think it's even worthwhile for temporary use, rather than using cars or other things. If, you know, we should have the discussion about the location of Village Fest, and where it might move. And Mayor, as you said, you know, there has even been talk that it might be good close to the museum, or near the new downtown park. It, it just seems like we're, we're a little bit open on that issue.
Yeah, also, I would, I would, I would suggest that we do continue, no matter where we move Village Fest with the bollards on La Plaza, because that also affects parades.
I don't, I didn't hear you.
It also affects parades.
Parades, okay.
And, and the, the, having that little loop still in La Plaza is really dangerous even for the parades. And so, but I, but I totally agree, we should take a look at, if we wanted to move, if we were thinking about having Village Fest somewhere else, we should think about the future of, of installing bollards on other streets.
And then, just following that, the question comes up on whether having a car blocking a street when necessary is a bad thing. Yeah, that's a temporary fix. If you want to close a street, is that a bad thing? Is that a bad solution, rather than spending three hundred thousand dollars on this? So, I'm not saying we shouldn't, I just wonder if we should question the need, potentially where it might be a temporary fix, anyway.
I think that if you're suggesting that we give you some alternatives, we'd be happy to take some, another pass at what would replace those as a B choice, or a couple of things that would add up to those figures. We could do that.
David, while I have you, quick question to you, Mayor, or Mayor for David, or for the commission. When I look at your commissioner recommendation summary list, and I see the other commissioner recommendations, were those just randomly brought up by the commissioners, or how did those come about? Just everybody brought their own list?
Are you speaking of the project list?
I'm sorry?
Are you speaking of the project list?
I'm, I'm looking at something that says commissioner recommendation summary list, and the top four there, and then underneath, there's about twelve or fifteen other recommendations.
This is all provided by city staff.
Those, those were all brought to you from staff?
Yes. This entire list is provided by city staff.
Thank you.
And we've discussed every single project with city staff.
Okay, and then those four came to the top through votes. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Reddy, on one thing that Measure J has been covering is the downtown property maintenance and other expenses. And in sixteen seventeen, it was four seventy-five, and seventeen eighteen, it's projected at five hundred. With the downtown opening, something, you know, August, September, and then those garages are, the underground garages will start being used, there'll be more electrical costs and cleaning costs, and also, we're responsible for the maintenance of the landscaping around the perimeter of the downtown development. Do you think this five hundred thousand dollars is a reasonable estimate for the additional costs we're going to have with the actual operations of the downtown?
Mayor, I think it, it probably will be for the new fiscal year eighteen, nineteen. However, beyond that, it probably is going to get, get, need to be increased. Particularly, we're going to have the public restrooms there, which will, will add to the, to both the cost and the security. But, but also, we absolutely are going to have to have a discussion within the next two years on additional police presence there, which was always anticipated there would be, and that this would be a, an area that could fund it. In addition to whatever fire needs are going to be required, my, I suspect we're going to have to have both a police and fire component in Measure J at some point over the next three years to help fund these services.
But, but the lands, but there will be a certain amount of landscaping cost, because, because the landscaping should be in just a few months, and then this goes through next July, so, and, and we're responsible for all the landscaping around the perimeter, correct?
Well, you're correct, and I, I think this will be enough, because we're going to have dollars left over from the current year, where we allocated a half a million, where obviously, we haven't spent that level. So I think between the carryover and the new appropriation will be enough to get us through the next fiscal year. But beyond that, you're right, those numbers, those costs are going to range between a half and three quarters of a million. Ultimately, I think it's probably going to be closer to a million and a half.
And what about security in the garage? Are we going to have to be funding for, but security patrols going through that garage? Will that be our responsibility?
Yes, that's going to be part of, part of these dollars.
Okay. And it's only going to go up twenty-five thousand from last year?
Well, only because the, the half a million, we're not spending that in the current fiscal year, so we'll carry that over. So in essence, we're going to have close to a million dollars, I would say, or nine hundred for the next fiscal year, but beyond that, we'll probably see additional increases, particularly for police and fire.
So for eighteen, nineteen, watch out. It's probably going to go up quite a bit.
And particularly nineteen, twenty.
Okay.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Can, can you tell me on the, on the, the projects on page twenty-seven? We have the projects approved for fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, but looking through that list, we have projects on that list that I don't think have even started yet, and some have been completed, and so I don't know if that's a Measure J question, or if it's a city question as to what the status is on some of these, like the, I mean, have we started anything with the Chino Cone Trail? I mean, I'd like, because those are, those are getting to be a couple of years old, so we're holding this money back from, you know, sitting, I, I don't understand how money just sits someplace waiting for something to happen for several years, when, you know, we could project that out to another year and use other years' funds.
I, I can answer that, Councilmember. So, we have completed the evaluation of all city facilities, so all of these projects are active and underway. The roof replacements will be going out to bid this year, as will the swim center repastor.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, you're talking too close into the mic.
It's echoing.
Is it? The, the, these projects are active, so we're, we're currently working on delivering these projects. The Chino Cone Trail, as an example, part of that's already been implemented with the, the fencing, and we're working with Friends of the Palm Springs Mountains to, to complete the other elements of it.
So all these projects are now underway, even though they're a couple of years old?
Or, or completed, yes.
Or completed.
The roof, like the roof replacements on City Hall, I don't, that hasn't been done. I think there's still a leak over Director Fag's desk.
That's correct. We, we're hoping to get that out to bid quickly.
And the HVAC chiller cooling towers maintenance Wi-Fi controller, that's this convention center, correct?
That, that was at various city facilities, as I understand it.
Okay.
So we have another, we have another part of the presentation, which has to do with themes, upcoming themes for community projects, and I'm going to ask the Vice Chair, Christine Hammond, to make that presentation.
Hi, everybody. You can, if you can't hear me, let me know, and I'll move things around. Chris is handing out some materials that you might want to look at as we're talking, just so that you can refer to some specific projects related to what we'll be talking about. I'd like to start with the fact that this is our third group of projects since Measure J was formed, and we've learned a lot over the years. You'll recall, our first group of projects was a huge group of projects. I'm not sure we have yet finished all of those projects. I know that we had a shade structure to go in at Mizel that started out at twenty-five thousand, thousand dollars, and this would have been four years ago, and was just recently installed at Mizel at a cost of eighty-seven thousand dollars. So we realized that by going out to the public and accepting all kinds of suggestions for projects, didn't, wasn't as easy to complete as having a more controlled, managed function. So we had a huge number of projects, and by, in our first year, and by our second year, when we started to theme the projects, we were able to sort of bring them into a little bit of control and manage the projects a little bit better. And our second group of projects is now two years in. We've had, we're going to be completing those projects this year, and the second group was a hotspots project for pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicle safety-related things. And our engineering staff, city staff, have done a fantastic job in putting bids together, putting the projects together, planning the projects out, and really streamlining things and capitalizing on the economies of scale that, that the city staff can do. So we're, as I said, we're finishing up the third year of that. Engineering has been working for the past year on designing, and I, this is a sidewalk project this next year, and they're designing the sidewalks, and they're, they've been contacting every resident that, whose property comes in contact with these projects, and inviting them to a meeting, which was just held a couple of weeks ago, very well attended, had an opportunity to ask questions. So it was, it's very well planned, and they will be ready to begin those projects after RFPs and bids are accepted in the end of, of the summer. So it should go very smoothly through the year. The other project that they'll be working on this year related to the second set of themed projects is traffic calming-related, to begin to reduce the speed of traffic in various neighborhoods around town. And that was one of the issues that we, that we found when we got into this project, was that speed was an issue all over town. So this is something that will, that they'll be looking at. So, which brings us to our third project. And last fall, as David said, we began talking to individuals and groups of people about starting our third themed project for Measure J, and inviting people to come and speak at Public Comment. So we are, we've had a number of people come in over the last couple of months and have identified two themes that we're bringing forward to you to share with you. The first theme is another hotspots theme, and this relate, relates to the significant increase in accidents involving bicycles and pedestrians over the last couple of years. And so, the, the group, one Palm Springs brought this to the commission, and they suggested using Palm Springs Police Department and our engineering department to review three or four years of accident data, and pull out of that data where the worst areas are in town for accidents, collisions involving pedestrians and bicycles, and what the causative factors of those accidents were, so that from an engineering perspective, we could fix some of those projects, or attempt to fix some of those projects. And this is something that they've asked to, to look at the top ten worst of the worst areas in town, and using that data, rank order them, and start working from the top down, from the worst to the less worst. So that was, that project. The second project that was suggested was through the Parks and Rec Commission, and it's a project that is, and you've got that pamphlet in front of you, and I'll also say that the map that you have was developed by the police department, showing the statistics of bicycle and pedestrian accidents over the last three years. Some of those dots overlap, so if they were three-dimensional, you would see those groups expanding quite a bit, but it's pretty clear to see where those, where the significant problem areas are in town, based on this map. So Parks and Rec's Commission also came in and spoke to us about a number of projects that they would recommend for that they would recommend for the parks. Safety-related issues, solar lighting on pathways and designated areas, security cameras, they'd like to see the speed limits around parks reduced, similar to what we do about, around schools. They'd like to add traffic calming around the parks to create more shade and shade structures, shade sales, similar to those at the airport. They'd like to see their parks, the, our parks, with shade, picnic areas, barbecues, places where families can come and have a family get together in the shade. They're also assessing parks for ADA remediation and would like to have funds to do more of that. So after listening twice to these, to these two groups, we, Measure J, agreed that these would be good projects for the city, and we thought that the one, the Parks project, was a great one for increasing the overall livability of our city, and the Hot Spots 2.0 project was one that had the potential of saving lives in our city. So the motion was made at the March Measure J meeting, recommending, and I'm reading the motion, recommend that we approve the two community projects over a four-year period, and again, for planning purposes, we're asking for four years, with $2 million being allocated to Parks and Recreation, and $2 million allocated to Hot Spots 2.0, subject to the following restriction on Parks and Recreation, with the understanding that we may have to look at that funding if additional funding may be needed for the downtown park. The motion was carried unanimously by the commissioners in attendance. We expect over the next year, both projects will be studied and designed and could be ready to go. And I'm happy to respond to any questions that you may have.
Councilman Coors?
First, thank you for your report, and thank you all for your work. I know how much work we put into this. And I also just, Commissioner Hammond, really thank you on the track of Hot Spots, because I'm going to do every request and amount of work you've done, and that's all staff. So these are both great community projects. So I'm really glad, I think these are both great priorities. But I, at least I would, and I've talked to Mayor, Project Foote, and the council, also sort of ask that you maybe consider some homeless-related funding, you know, and that's, and some of its recent new information, right? Roy's, which has been our resource center, which has been our emergency shelter, is closing at the end of June, and we're looking at ways to have emergency transitional housing. We have been working as a subcommittee on affordable housing, on low-income housing projects where homeless people could live with wraparound services, but under the current president's tax plan, the tax incentives that make those happen are diminishing dramatically.
Happiness.
And given, I think, the need and the community, I think, concern and caring and wanting to do things around homelessness, I think there are some thoughts there. We'll go into what those projects might be. You know, the city increased our funding last year, and had some good results, and we're going to present at the next council meeting on those. We recently submitted, the subcommittee, my program, and I work on, our city manager, a seven-figure grant, but, you know, the amount of funding we need to really have an impact on homelessness, we don't have. And it's not normally something a city our size would do. It would be the county who gets tax dollars, but they're short of resources. They don't have the resources they need, and they're having a budget shortfall. So I don't know what other council members think, or other commissioners, but I'd like that maybe to be thrown in the mix, especially given some of the new information about Roy's and federal tax incentives going away, as well as that becoming one of the top five city priorities to increase resources around homelessness, which only happened within the last couple of months, that strategic plan change happened. So I don't know, Tim, if you have anything, or anyone else?
I have a question.
Well, I want to follow up on what Jeff's been saying. We do have a plan that we're working on, and we do have some suggestions. We put a lot of time and effort to not only, the subcommittee and the committee members coming up with some ways to address this homeless issue. We're all aware that we'll never be able to solve it, but we do feel that we've made a dent, and we can continue to make, make a significant impact on the homeless in our community through some of the programs that we're planning. And so I'm not quite sure how we bring that to you, but it is a priority for this council, and so we do need to figure out a way to do that. And did you want to, did you want to say anything else about the, that, because I was speaking on another issue?
No, unless you have, you have something on that?
Yeah, well, I had a question specifically on the topic of homeless budget, or lack of it. So, you know, we're faced with this every year. We're faced with these issues, the same type of balancing, which is the hardest thing we do, or it is for me, anyway. So Councilman Coors, you know, when you make that sort of a suggestion, specifically, do you have a number in mind, and over what period of years, if we were to use Measure J dollars for that? And then, you know, this comes to a time also where we then have to start weighing out other expenses, like the buzz, you know, the importance of these type of things compared to finally trying to get our arms around the homeless situation. I mean, you two, you and Councilwoman Foote have done a remarkable job. I, it amazes me every day how much you two have accomplished on this subcommittee in the last year. So I guess what I want to know is what you need to continue that momentum? And then I think we have to make some tough choices on how we would find those dollars.
I mean, the reality is, there's a million dollars a year in community projects that could come from Measure J, and, you know, it's going to be ongoing. If we're going to, there are a couple of projects that we're looking at. We have submitted a grant request that I think we're feeling optimistic we're going to be funding on, that might match our funding. We'll know more at that council meeting. And depending on which portions they may fund, there'll be other portions. But one is emergency transitional housing, you know, and we fund, the case manager, the housing specialist, those things, which we did for four months at Roy's with great success. But we have to, hopefully, we'll have a building, which we may be able to lease, but what we're going to need is to renovate it, so that may be a project. But I would think we, you know, we would easily spend on projects, a million dollars a year, for as many years as it was available.
So if we could find money in that range, you could maintain the momentum that you have and build on that?
We could maintain the momentum, but right now, I don't think we have, we don't have a specific number. You know, we're working on a plan, because we do feel we will get this grant. And so with this grant, we can then plan. It's kind of a waste of time to plan for something that we don't have funding for.
Right.
And so we're looking at all sources, and so it should be a community project. I mean, it should be a project that the community, the business community, and the city all participate in, because this is not a city issue. Homelessness is not a city issue. Homelessness is an issue that we all share in trying to solve. We're not a city, the county gets paid for these things, and they have a huge problem in the county, and they have given us some resources. But, and C-VAG will be putting forth some resources also, but it's up to us to come up with the rest of the resources to fund what needs to happen.
I would just add, as, you know, in looking at a theme, right, another potential project, hopefully we'll have more on this next week as well, is we've met with a number of potential housing, nonprofit housing developers, and nonprofits who could provide services, but there's now going to be a several-million-dollar funding gap. And that is another potential, right, is to help build a low-income housing that would house people who are currently homeless. So, I mean, there are a number of projects. We'd love to do them all, we can't. So, you know, that was something we would talk to the commission about, you know, brainstorming if that's a theme the commission, you know, wants to further discuss.
It's never going to be our most popular topic, you know, it's, this is not, it's not fun or sexy to fund homeless programs when we have all these other amazing things that you go out and find and other commissions bring, so this is always the toughest one to deal with.
I want to talk about something else, which I think is a positive thing, something that I think we all should look at. That map that you gave us, I just did a quick count of the number of bicycle traffic collisions in 2016 as compared to the number of 2014. And with the additional money that we have put into our bicycle routes, we have cut that, that traffic collision in half, more than half. A quick count, we had 23 traffic collisions with bicyclists in 2014, and in 2016, we had 11. So that really speaks a lot to the fact of, you know, people ask us why we're so much in favor of the CB link, or why we're putting so much money into bicycle routes, and here's the proof of, there are, you know, 12, 14 more people that were not hurt in an accident because of what we've put into it. So this was a great little map.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Mills?
I fully understand that the responsibility, the final responsibility for how Measure J dollars are spent lies with the five of us. And the, and I think it's important, at least it is for, for me, to go back to when Measure J was approved, and the promises that were made from that council at that time. Granted, councils change, but Measure J was approved on, on the upgrading the downtown and maintaining the downtown and infrastructure projects. And as, and that was a promise I made at that time, that Measure J money, as you are doing, are being used as, for the downtown and infrastructure projects. And I, and homeless to me is not an infrastructure project, and I don't think, I'm sympathetic towards it, but to use Measure J money for that is, is not, in my mind, what we promised the citizens. And so anything that, that, that starts to move away from infrastructure projects and the, and the downtown, I think we need to think about very, very strongly. And I'm not saying, like I said, I'm not saying it isn't an issue, but I think we should be looking other places than Measure J for that.
Councilmember Coors?
Just a couple of things on that, just in response. One, I think homelessness is a big issue downtown, and I'm not sure that the buzz qualifies as infrastructure. I've always wondered how that's infrastructure, versus building an emergency shelter for Palm Springs homeless residents, which seems like a building. So, I've always, and it's a question I've always had, so just since you brought that up. Was there a discussion as buzz being infrastructure?
It was, it was, it was a, it was a part of the downtown and increased use of the downtown in sales tax dollars.
And?
And that was, that was the intent. It was, it was, it was a part of the rejuvenation of downtown.
And I, and I think we could also argue that not having so many homeless people downtown would be a significant part of the rejuvenation of downtown. I think, I think that that's, that to us is one of the major things that we hear as a complaint from the merchants downtown, and what we get in our emails from tourists who feel unsafe downtown because of the number of homeless people. So I think that I would agree with Councilmember Coors, that the same as the buzz was to add an amenity to our downtown for, for improving the downtown experience, that solving our homeless problem is also an adding to the downtown experience.
Go ahead.
Everyone, buttons don't.
No, no, you're, it's always on. You've got to be careful, it's always on.
I mean, I, I fully understand you can rationalize any, anything you want, but clearly, when this item passed, the voters, homelessness or those type of programs were never, never thought of as being included in that, at least not from what, what I saw and, and felt. So, so I'm just, again, I'm just, I'm cautioning the council, we can let Measure J know what, I mean, if we want to change the theme or the goals or the whatever, I mean, it's certainly something that the city council has the authority to, to do. But I, but I think in any, 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 any use of that for what the discussion is going towards now, to me, is not infrastructure, and it's not what the intent of the improvement of the, of the downtown was. So I just, I think we, we need to look at, look at where that money came from, and, and perhaps look at some other sources. And I know Jeff and Jenny, that you are looking at, at other sources, and I'm sure that's probably the, the number-one goal. But, but to, to let the Measure J group, to have them modify that, that goal is a, the goal that they currently have for infrastructure is, is something that, that I don't think we should do.
If I may, I agree with Councilmember Mills. I think the Measure J Commission is doing a great job in following the original tasking that was given to them several years ago. But, you know, I think we're all aware of the fact that Measure J and using it as capital is not a contract, because technically, that money goes into the general fund. But we do have an agreement with the residents of Palm Springs that that funding would be used for capital projects. And if we're going to have to put more money into the homeless solution, I think we probably will, but I think we need to look for other costs, because I really feel our residents feel that they voted for that to do capital improvements. And a couple of things I'd like to add is, one, having been on the Measure J Commission at the time, I can remember the Measure J Commission did not recommend the buzz. That was a city council recommendation. Measure J Commission never voted on the buzz, and did not approve it. So I just want to make, like, I remember that very distinctly, because that was a very extensive discussion that we had. Also, a couple of things that I'm concerned about, I don't know if Measure J is looking into it, but I know our cost overruns on the police station are significant, or the est, I shouldn't, overruns, because we haven't started yet, the estimates. Dr. Reddy, have we given the Measure J Commission a full impact of what those cost estimate increases could be?
Yes, that's, that's why they have, are recommending the additional dollars, I believe. Marcus, I don't know if there's something you want to add to that. You might update us on, I know you're doing the rebid, when those will be ready?
We're getting ready to rebid the police department, so those bids will go out in the next month.
And Fire Station Number Four is basically doubling cost, correct?
Well, we don't know that yet, but my expectation is, given the current economic climate, which is great for the city, but when it comes to bidding, contractors aren't trying to undercut other contractors because they're all busy. So we're seeing, you know, when, when things are good, the prices go up for our construction contracts. So I've heard you before, you want us to make sure we're aiming high on our estimates, but right now, it's very hard- but right now, it's very hard to gauge with our projects what the bids will come in at. They're coming in higher, though. So, right now, the 1.7 million that we're requesting for funding for the fire station would provide the funding for the currently estimated cost of the project. But given what happened with the police station, it's possible that more money will be required, just basically based on the lack of competition in the bidding environment.
So, my point is the, the Measure J commission needs to be prepared to perhaps go back to the drawing board as, or the balance sheet to find additional funds. That could happen, correct?
That's correct.
And, and also, I would add, Mayor, that we should really absolutely consider the fact that probably the next eight to 10 years, we, we need to think about, with Measure J, general fund combination, each of the fire stations must be significantly repaired. Uh, they're all getting old, so this is the first one we're doing, but they're, the others are going to need repair, too. And so, we should plan on that over the next several years.
As I recall, Measure J actually, in the very beginning, funded a study of a location for a new fire station and identified a spot for that, correct?
Uh, yes, but at this point, I don't know that, there's no direction to go forward with that, but we will need to replace or significantly renovate the fire stations that we currently have.
Yeah, because number one is woefully inadequate. Number five is also woefully inadequate. Number four is under, under construction. So, I just say, I'm just saying that we have some significant capital projects of the type that were actually advertised to the residents when Measure J was put on the ballot. Another question that we have not addressed, I don't, I don't know if Measure, if Measure J has been addressing it, is doing any planning for the library? Because I know a couple of years ago, there was the, you know, proposals of like small, medium, and large renovation costs for the library, and we still don't know what will happen to the College of the Desert. But if that doesn't work out with College of the Desert, we still have to have some contingency somewhere in the future for that library construction, correct?
That is absolutely correct.
And is there any, any allowance?
It's on the other list.
Okay. And, hmm, what does, I was writing numbers down. And, 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 Doctor Ready, it's not inconceivable, you're talking about Measure J and the general fund, it's not inconceivable with our retirement annual cost going up to $26 million a year projected in 2022, and our public safety costs continuing to increase, we could eventually have to dig into Measure J for public safety, correct?
I would anticipate that a future council will, will do just that, or will likely do that.
Okay, so we need to be very careful with these funds?
Yes, okay. It's dynamic.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Roberts?
Well, no, I just, okay, I think I have a mic. I can't tell.
You're on.
I, I don't, did I hear you suggesting that potentially, we would use Measure J funds for salaries for, for fire police?
I don't think this council will, but a future council, I would venture to say, will likely be in a place, position they might have to do that.
I mean, obviously, that's a priority for us, but I wonder about what the community that voted for the Measure J would feel about us using that for salaries versus capital improvements, which is what they were sold. And so...
We absolutely said there would be no use of this money.
Yeah.
And, and if I can clarify, I say that as, because, is, is, as you know, it's a general tax, not a specific. And at some point, doing this long as I have, when you get to a crisis point, at some point, and you have to either reduce police and fire significantly or use Measure J, a council at a future point will have the ability to do that. So, that's what I am forecasting. But again, this is very dynamic, and, and the voters did have the understanding to be used for capital. But a big part of this was the downtown. And we did know that with the downtown was going to be increased police and fire services. So, it, in, in my mind at least, it was not out of the realm of possibility to think that a portion of Measure J, at least for the downtown services, would be appropriate.
Hmm, or, or solid reserves, one or the other.
Yeah, I, you know, I hate to be negative. It's just these, these are potential costs we could be seeing in the next five years, maybe not us, but somebody up here is going to be seeing in the next five years that we have to keep a contingency plan for.
I suggest we push it all down the road to them.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Actually, we're pretty good at that.
We're good at kicking the can.
Okay, any other questions of our commission?
Um, no, so I don't know, sort of, on asking, you know, the commission to think about the homeless issue. I do want to be clear, we're talking about the two, the two things, if we were, if you were going to look at it, are building projects, right? We have lost our, our emergency shelter, and we need a new place as an emergency shelter. And we need affordable housing to get people off the streets, which I see more as infrastructure. But I appreciate there's sort of a split, so I don't want to leave you without any direction, so...
But Councilmember Coors, just to play devil's advocate here, if we did take capital money to build affordable housing for homeless people, then it's going to have to be operated and maintained. So, would you be then looking at Measure J money?
No.
Okay.
No.
Just wanted to be clear on that.
Right, and that's what we're, we're, the grants we can get are not for capital, but they are for services. So, this, I think, would be a good fit piece, and that's what we're working on right now. So, that would be why I'd like them to at least consider it. Similarly, I'd like them to consider the buzz, which I don't see as infrastructure. And if I were picking the two, I'm, I might lean to trying to address homelessness and have place for homeless people to go, because leaving them on the street, downtown and in parks, is not good for them, the city, our economy, tourism, or anything, and especially downtown.
I, I agree. As we get, as we move towards July 1st, and we have to approve something, that, but, the buzz may very well, if not this year, become on the chopping block next year, because frankly, if you, I've only written it a few times, but there's very few writers. And even with the official counts, it runs out to, what, Doctor Ready, $4.50 per writer?
I, I don't know the accurate number.
Yeah, it's about, it's four, about $4.50 to $4.65 a writer. And there are some soft savings. It keeps people from driving while drinking. It helps with the, the lack of parking downtown, but those are soft. Trouble is, that's one of those cases where you have soft savings and hard costs, which is always difficult to balance out.
And of course, it, you know, if the argument is buzz gets people not to rent cars, that's the biggest income at the airport is the car rental. So, you know, costs can come in all kinds of ways. Right?
True.
Yeah.
Can we talk about something else?
Yeah, I think, I fear we're going in circles here. If we could, I'd love us to move on here, because we're going in circles.
Chairman Vogel? We have a provision for, uh, is it on?
Yeah.
It was on.
Yep.
No, it's on.
Um, given the fact that we anticipated that there might be conversation this evening, and that wouldn't end up being as absolutely clear as crystal, we have a provision for a regular Measure J meeting a week from this Thursday. So, there would be a city council meeting next Thursday, is that correct? Uh, next Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Where there would be more information about this. And in fact, there's a meeting about the downtown park this Thursday. So, perhaps what we could do is allow this conversation to be postponed, and we will meet again and have a conversation amongst ourselves as to what we've heard this evening, and come back with either a revised recommendation or a similar recommendation. Um, I just wanted, want some clarification. Uh, I think that we'll also do that on the capital projects and perhaps give you some alternatives, maybe three or four below the ones we decided on, in case you decide that the bollards are not something that is for this year. Is that, did I hear that also?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we can have another meeting. We've all agreed that we would have another meeting, and then we can communicate again.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have another question. Just on the, on what the handout was, Christine, on the year one, is this, this upcoming year, has that become year one? I'm looking at the handout.
You're referring to parks?
Yeah.
Um, I believe that that would be year one of the project. Uh, I, looking at the project, and again, based on our experience with these kinds of community projects, there's a lot of planning and design work that goes on before the shovel hits the dirt. So, year one would be whenever that project would be ready to go. And that, again, I think that this was an estimate on the part of the, the commission coming in to talk to us, and, you know, as, as they begin to delve more into the project, that could be modified as well.
So, then, that's why I'm curious as to how you divided it up into year one.
Yeah, I didn't divide it.
Year two, year three, and four.
That came directly from the Parks Commission.
Oh, from Parks.
I did, I did not divide it.
Okay.
So, those are their suggestions for projects and how to divide those.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I agree 100% the lighting in our parks is horrible. And when it gets dark early in the day, we have, I, I mean, I don't even see the need for solar pathway lighting. I would rather see some regular lighting in the parks. Are the kids playing in the playgrounds when it's, you know, in the wintertime? In the playgrounds, they have to stop like it, because we don't light our, our playground areas. So, parents bringing kids to the, to the park after they get off work to play, it's in, it's in darkness. And so, so I think this is, I love this lighting thing, because I think it's really, really needed in the park system.
Chairman Vogel, I believe Councilmember Williams has something he'd like to say.
I'm just a little bit confused, because I've been on this Measure J commission since its inception. And in the beginning, I was under the impression we were to recommend projects to the city council. That morphed into, I believe, at least what I thought, what we thought, was that we would make recommendations based on what was provided to us by the city for capital projects, with the exception of $1 million a year. Which the Measure J commission would then meet on, get input from the community, decide how we thought that money should be spent, and that would be our recommendation, and we thought it would be the go-forward. Now, we have spent three, four months talking with community members. We've come up with two suggestions over a four-year period, starting in July of 18, and we're being told, well, wait a minute, that community project money, maybe that should be spent on the homeless issue. So, if that's the direction you want us to go, just tell us that, and we'll stop asking the community how to spend the money, and we'll help you decide what might be a good way to help the homeless situation. But we spent a lot of time doing what we thought we were supposed to. Am I correct, David? I just want to, I don't want to be too bad, but that's my take on it.
This is a Measure J conversation, so...
Yeah, this is a Measure J conversation.
I think what happened here was, in my interpretation, especially because this is about analysis a year ahead of time, that the council has asked us to consider whether homelessness should be considered within the group of projects or the group of themes. We can certainly discuss it and come back and say, no, we don't. Or we could all say, well, it's a new topic, and it came late. It came under the, after our deadline, but I think that council has the authority to extend the deadline. And so, I don't think we're being directed. I think we're being asked to be, to consider it. And that's why I suggested we meet next week and have the discussion. But we can come back with our own evaluation as a, as a group.
Thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Roberts?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Williams, I, I want to say that I heard you, and that I, I understand that it can be frustrating, and I think you're right in some cases. I think you sometimes get mixed messages. And it's the nature of the budget hearings. It's, it's just painful, because naturally, there's never enough money to do all the things we want to do. And each one of us up here has something that we feel is, you know, excruciatingly important, and, um, so, you know, we go after it. Um, I want to say for the record that I think you've all done an excellent job in the way that you've compiled your information and with the recommendations that you have come back with. Capital improvements, it, you know, from my understanding and my career in municipal governance, has a specific meaning. And it can be interpreted in a number of ways, but at the end of the day, I think you've interpreted it quite well. And yes, we can, we can continue discussing other things, but it doesn't mean that Measure J can or will be able to solve all of these issues that we're all very hopped up about. So, I, I want to say that if you are feeling frustrated, it probably means we're confusing you, and I want to personally apologize for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'd like to also add that having sat where you're sitting, I know how much study, analysis, and debate you go through for countless hours, coming up with these recommendations, and I really appreciate it. And it, it's a very, very challenging job. And also, welcome to the relatively new Measure J commissioners. So, I know some of, some of you are old, are veterans from day one, but there's a few new ones, so welcome aboard. Anything else, council? Anything else from your group? Chairman Vogel?
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay.
We pause briefly.
Thank you very much for your time, and we appreciate it very much. We appreciate the conversation.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll pause for a few minutes while we reorder here. Okay, we'll take, we'll take a five, uh, 10, what, 10 minute?
Yeah.
Of the overall budget.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The second part of this is, as you know, we presented the budget to you several meetings ago. What I want to do this evening is just, just briefly go through a couple of highlights of the, of the budget that we submitted. Then obviously, we can address any questions that council has. At that point, Mayor, then, we would open up for a public comment. And then after public comment, if there's any direction that staff, that council wants to give staff, we would take that then. But right now, if I could, if we could go ahead and put up the PowerPoint. Thank you. On this slide here, I just wanted to remind everyone that the budget that we submitted obviously was essentially balanced with what we believe to be a, and that's not working over there. If you can see, close to about $347,000 deficit. And that is with the new positions that we are requesting. And a couple of highlights of this are, the fiscal reserves would be about 19 million, 19, almost 20%. And as you see there, there's a several-year history of where we've been with reserves. The major increases in revenue, obviously, the hotel tax, sales, and property taxes. Now, that's the natural growth of what we are expecting. However, that will be offset with, these are the expense increases. Obviously, just the cost of living increases that are part of the bargaining unit contracts. They will be about 840. And then you can see those additional amounts for each of those different areas.
We don't have that in our packet.
That's for the last council meeting.
It is in your packet, Councilman.
Is it page nine?
Oh, it's not the additional handbook, okay.
It's in your folders.
Anyway, it's on the screen. Keep going.
So specifically, just as a reminder that these are some of the areas of increases, specifically in, for example, the, a large one there, you see water and electrical rates. Those are significantly going up. And...
Doctor, did we know that was going to happen? That is a big jump.
Yes, we've anticipated because DWA had rate increases, as did Edison. Now, with regard to specific positions, obviously, these are the ones that were included in the recommended budget. Obviously, you have the jail transport officers and the other police officers, the attorney paralegal. I would note that amount is already budgeted in the city attorney's budget, facilities maintenance worker, and the deputy fire chief. Now, again, that total cost, even with that cost, our total deficit would be about $330,000. But this is obviously the last slide in a main piece of the puzzle of this budget. As you can see, our projected CalPERS pension costs are significantly going to increase over the next seven, eight years. And you see right, currently, we're about 13.2 million, and we expect that to go up to about 26. And that's based on the new formula that has been released by the state CalPERS. And so that being said, that's something obviously we need to, to think about. Our natural growth in revenue is not going to keep pace with that amount. We also have, all bargaining units in 2018 will be up for renewal. And so obviously, all of those things together are going to have significant impact, particularly on this number here. So that being said, Mayor, those are the highlights. And if there's any questions you have, we're happy to answer them specifically.
Has more course? Oh. Other question? Okay, a couple question. Dr. Reddy, you said, what is the historical growth of TOT and other revenue? From what you were just saying, you don't see that keeping up really with the estimated, what you see as our overhead costs going up?
The, by way of comparison, our TOT in about 2005 or so was, you know, roughly about half of what it is now. But we're not going to see that kind of growth. Obviously, the development we've done, and we've had some significant increase there. But going forward, that annually, what, Jeff, this is about 2 million you're expecting this year?
Yes.
So, so our natural growth, the 2 to 4 million dollars in all areas, to balance our natural expenses every crease, that's about, hopefully, it evens out. But we would not anticipate enough natural growth to address these first costs.
Well, based on your 17 years of experience here and your crystal ball, before we have our next meeting, do you think you could possibly put together, say, five or six-year projected revenue versus projected cost? So we can sort of see if there's a delta between the two, and if that delta is increasing. That would just give us a feel of where we're going in the next few years and how cautious we need to be currently.
Well, two things. Jeff, I think you've done some of that.
I, I have done some projections based upon TOT anticipated growth and hotel incentive payments. We haven't done any long-term forecasting on other aspects of the budget.
But what I can tell you, Mayor, there's generally between a 2 to 4 million dollar increase in revenue year over year. Except in the bad years, when property taxes went down, obviously, that was significantly lower.
Okay, now, on the CalPERS projection, which you have up on the screen now, it shows it going up to projected $26 million a year from the current year, 13.2 million in 2022, 23. That's based upon what they're saying right now, which is a 7% income. But I believe recently, their success on that has been significantly less. If, say, there is a downturn in the economy and winter comes again nationally, or say, because of the federal government, they put more onus upon the state to pay more cost, and the state is hurting for revenue, could we see that go up?
Yes, you potentially could.
Okay. Another question I had was, on the 17, 18 preliminary budget detail on page five, sorry, I forgot, I didn't ask you about this before the meeting. But on, you explained on your delta chart, there's several, you've explained several of these increases, like the personnel costs, et cetera. But line 15 is community and economic development, and that's going from 1.228 million this year to 3 million. What is that, what is that delta?
Mr. Mayor, this is, this is a reclassification called for by the auditors through change of accounting standards. Previously, we had accounted for hotel incentive payments as a reduction of revenue. And they've asked us to change that to an increase, to an expense item. So you'll see a corresponding increase in revenue and expense as we simply moved it from a negative revenue to an expense.
Okay, so that's just an accounting.
That's an accounting thing.
What balances that? Okay, I just didn't, that was a big delta, which wasn't explained in Dr. Reddy's deltas. The, another thing that's interesting that we discussed last year is Recreation Administration line 30, which was 1.49 million this year, and projected at 1.526 million next year. Last year, we had quite an extensive discussion of user fees. And have we looked anymore? of user fees. And have we looked anymore into perhaps adjusting those user fees, particularly for people who use our facilities who don't live in Palm Springs, you know, swimming pool, and other recreational facilities that our taxes are paying for, that people are using it, obviously, at a cost that's not covering those facilities? Have we looked at that anymore on perhaps increasing some of those user fees?
Mayor, that would be some direction that council may want to give staff to do for this year. They've had a nominal COLA increase, as all fees have, but that discussion of increasing fees for non-residents versus residents has not occurred, but that certainly could be direction that the council gives us.
And I know one big nut we have every year, and it's been there for quite a while, is the convention center itself. And it's $7.7 million a year that it costs us, that it's above and beyond what it takes in its revenue. And part of that, $5 million a year is debt service. How many more years do we have on that debt service? You know off the top of your head?
I believe it's about 15 years, but I don't have it.
So that's with us for a long time?
Yes, yes.
And we just refinance those bonds, too.
We're in the process of financing the bonds right now.
Yeah, I hadn't asked you this before, Doctor Reddy, but I was just thinking of it this morning. And that is, when I was at the Oasis Awards, I mean, you know, there's nine cities and all these hotels and all these things, and they all benefit from our convention center, which we're paying $5 million a year to subsidize. Have we ever talked to CVB about perhaps kicking some money in towards the convention center, since it's not like the airport, which is revenue neutral, and it basically paying for itself? This is something that we are paying, which benefits the entire Coachella Valley, the greater Palm Springs region. Has there ever been any thought about some way to try to get some revenue from other cities to help cover that cost?
Mayor, I would, I think that's a great idea. You're the voting member on there? I think you should bring it up at the next meeting. My sense is, you may not get the appropriate votes, but it'd certainly be a good, good, good start.
But is that, I hadn't had a chance to talk to you about it, because I just thought of it this morning, during the Oasis Awards. But is that, is that a valid premise?
Not for them.
Not for them.
I mean, that's just been my experience. They're elected.
There is a rep, you have everybody ask that to happen.
But seriously, all the cities do benefit from this convention center.
They would not say that. They would not take that position.
Mr. Mayor, it's not the first time that this particular issue has been brought up with the CVB. Can we keep you up, Eddie? So, so, I'm all for bringing it up again, but just make sure you're not sitting against the wall.
I think we have a new tiger in town, Mayor, and I think you could go bring that home for us.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'm gonna need some help. Councilman Roberts?
Yeah, I have a few questions. I want to go back to the CalPERS liability, again, because this is an odd theme that kind of rears its ugly hat. It's always in, it's the elephant in the living room, and Mayor, you bring it up somewhat often. And I remember it was even a theme in the state of the city last year. And I want us to, I want us to get to a place on this where it doesn't just keep coming back to haunt us. What we're looking at is something we can't possibly solve right now. And Doctor Reddy, you know, correct me here, from where I stand, this feels more like a mortgage. And it's a mortgage that we're just not going to pay off. And it, and it looks to me like we had a nice starter rate that ended. And it's increasing in a pretty intensive way, and there's not a whole lot we can do about it. We either need to, there's two choices here. We either need to come up with a new golden goose that we don't have, or we're going to need to radically cut services to our community. And I don't see either of those happening right now. I don't see any magic answer to this. It's also, seems to me, to be a problem that every city's dealing with in one way or another. And it's a city that could bankrupt many states, or an issue that could bankrupt many states. So, it's, it's, it's something that we have to face. It's, it's, it's part of doing business, it's part of municipal governance, and it's part of paying employees. I want us to come to a place with this where we don't just keep bringing it up and hitting ourselves over the head with it. Until we have a plan, and until we have a real focus, it, I'm getting lost here myself in this. It's just to me that we, we bring it up, but there isn't a real solution for it. And he's not going to be able to walk in in the next meeting and hand us a solution. Or he will, but it's not going to be a solution we like. So I guess what I'm saying is, we need to get to a comfort level with this. And, and understanding that we're not going to probably solve this in our time on this council, in the time that, you know, Doctor Reddy is, you know, performing the miracles that he performs, you know, once again, he says something like, "I'm bringing you a balanced budget," and it passes over us like someone offering us a napkin. It's a pretty remarkable thing that this guy, for what, 17 solid years, doctor, has walked into this room, or rooms that look like it, with a balanced budget. And I first want to say thank you for that. That's how I actually wanted to start tonight. It's pretty remarkable what you and your staff bring to us. And we don't celebrate that enough. I don't think our community really understands what that takes to balance the budget, to bring us a balanced budget. We're up here fighting over the extra money because we have a balanced budget. So first, I want to thank you all for that. But I'd like us, as a council, to get to some comfort level about this CalPERS thing. Because we're not there, and it just sort of feels like this knife that comes out every now and then, that takes a stab at the staff and takes a stab at us. And I'd like to get your, I'd like to get my colleagues' thoughts on this issue while we're talking about it.
Oh, I didn't mention the unfunded liability tonight. I was talking about our annual costs, which are totally, always very separate and distinct from the unfunded.
Well, it came up, actually, at the last meeting, and it seems to come up as a reoccurring theme. And Mayor, I know you're passionate about this.
You brought it up tonight.
Yeah, you bet I did, because it got brought up last time. And if, and we're sitting here looking at it, it's the slide on our screen. That's why I'm talking about it. So, you know, either we need to come up with something, we need to come up with a solution that we feel good about, or we need to accept that it is something that is going to roll forward with our city and years, and we're not going to solve it here. This council's just not going to solve this.
Eventually, all those people will die, so that will solve the...
I don't even know how to respond to that.
No, no, over a period of decade, over a period of decades, the people that this unfunded liability is for will no longer be collecting because they'll, they'll be gone. So that's how that will eventually come down, right?
Yes.
Okay. I do understand the issue.
I don't, the unfunded liability does not scare me, and it's, that's not what I wanted to talk about, but, you know, so somebody else can... I'm happy to sort of weigh in a little bit on that. Because I think there's some, we may understand it, I don't know that the public always does, but, you know, our total pension liability, right, for future retirees, current retirees, if I have the number right, and correct me, Jeff, is about 440-something million dollars.
That's correct.
Right? And about 310 under the current market conditions is funded.
That's correct. That is the value of assets that we've already paid over the years to CalPERS, which they still hold on our behalf.
Okay. So the 132 million is what is yet to be funded?
That's correct.
And those aren't for costs that are due right now. In other words, well, I know. Okay.
The figures that you see on the screen are the annual amounts, too.
So to pay it all, to start paying it down now, at any level that would make sense, and my understanding is for every dollar we would pay down, it would maybe lower those costs five cents, 10 cents max?
That's my estimate, because what PERS demands that municipalities do is that you're paying now, not only for this year's costs, but a portion of future year's costs going out 30, 40 years.
Right. And sort of, you know, we know we're going to have salaries in 30 or 40 years. We're not putting that away right now either. I mean...
That's correct.
So, I mean, these are sort of future costs. And if we're going to pay down 5 or 10 million, which would be the minimum to start putting a dent in that portion, I mean, I can't envision how it wouldn't wreck havoc on our economy. It would cut services for our city. So to me, that, just in answering that question, is, yeah, it's there, but it's something we deal with by paying it off every year. And I don't think we would want to do the damage to our economy, which would actually have the opposite impact we would like to have, by paying, cutting $10 million out of this budget.
I, you know, I think it's important to note, when you look at that screen there, and you, and you see the increase in these annual obligations doubling over that six-year period, and yet, down at the bottom, you only see one year's worth of the unfunded liability. There are no projections now for what that unfunded liability is going to be, but the, one of the major reasons for those increases in the annual costs is to address the unfunded liability. We just don't know how much it's going to impact it.
So in essence, you're sort of doing it by default?
Yeah. But the way it comes to us, you know, it comes to us as, you know, it's jumping from 13 million to 26, you know, and the reality is, we do have it under control to as much as we can. I guess the point that I want us to be clear about is, we're not going to pay this off. There's no way to do that. There's no way to get completely ahead of it. But we are doing what we need to do every year to move it forward and to keep it paid properly.
But with all due respect, Councilman Roberts, if the mayor brings this up, then maybe the mayor has a solution. So I don't think we've given him time to talk about a solution.
I'm right with you. That, I'm wide open to that.
I didn't bring it up tonight. The portion, only portion I was addressing tonight was...
No, no, I'm not talking about tonight, but you have brought it up in the past. And so, so if we are discussing it, then I would be very curious as to hear how you feel that we should be addressing this.
I don't know. If I did, I'd probably be a city manager and make a hell of a lot more money. I don't know how that unfunded portion is. I'm just, my concern right now, my immediate concern, is to make sure we make allowances to pay the increase in the annual portion, which has to be paid, right, David?
Yeah. And that's where I was sort of going to go next, which is, we are going to see increases we haven't seen before. And that's nothing to do with anything we did. That's CalPERS. It's a result of bad investments, the bad economy, various factors. It's not as a result of anything the city did.
And some of this goes back to the 90s.
Yeah.
When, in the mid 90s, when, when the whole dot-com thing was going crazy with the stock market, and CalPERS was earning money hand over fist in the market. And their actuaries predicted that these increases would continue. And their actuaries went to school districts and cities and counties and said, "You're not going to have to pay anything this next couple of years." I mean, that was the beginning, in my mind, of the problem that we are living with a quarter of a century later.
And I think there's another thing that the, as much as we, we are so concerned, and if you look at CalPERS' track record, which has not been good in investments, and there's been a number of cities that have talked about, and I think actually, a couple of cities have withdrawn from CalPERS. But it's, it's not a practical idea to do that. Because during the, the financial downturn, there was a movement to withdraw from CalPERS, and for cities to withdraw from CalPERS because they felt that it was being so mismanaged. And there was a big change in overhaul in who managed CalPERS, and who was on the board, and so on and so forth. But I haven't seen any significant change, even after that. I don't know if you want to comment on that.
If you, if you choose to withdraw from CalPERS, you can do that. But you're going to get a bill from CalPERS.
Right.
That's significant and relatable to that 132 million dollar figure.
Right.
Yeah. And it's a new requirement, as of like this year, I think, isn't it, Director Keel, that we have, that this unfunded liability has to be reported?
Yes. That's been part of the transparency movement that's spread throughout the country. And the accounting community, the CPAs, have gotten involved, and they've made the rule change that said, starting this last year, you needed to put these liabilities on your books in the form of your annual audit report. And that's what we started doing. So, as Councilman Roberts mentioned, a lot of cities on paper went bankrupt this first year. It's a serious problem. But that issue, it's not like suddenly you really did become bankrupt. You just, your net worth is properly reflected.
Councilman Corrus?
Sure. I mean, so, I mean, from my perspective and following up, you know, on what was said, I think the unfunded pension liability is something, we're not in a position, we don't have the extra money sitting around that we can start paying it down. But what we need to do is figure out, you know, a year from now, we're going to need 3 million more to pay CalPERS, you know, in six years, 14 million more. And so we're looking at this budget, and we either have to think about how we're going to raise revenue, and no one wants to talk about some of those things, or what we're going to cut, and no one wants to talk about those things. But the reality is, our normal movement up in revenue is not going to come close to covering this. So, that's what, at the very least, we need to deal with this. And kicking account down the can, kicking the can down the road for a year, we can get away with, two years is going to be a lot tougher. So, let's start thinking about that. Because I think that's the important thing, is what is the plan to start addressing those?
I think that's what I've been saying.
Yeah. And I think what you brought up doesn't include other costs we know we're going to have as well, right? You know, potentially 3 million in public safety, related costs estimated from the tribe's plan, if they build it fully. And that's impact on our TOT. So, those are the hard kind of decisions we don't like making, but I think we need to start talking about.
But if we're going to, the point is, if we're going to have the discussion, you know, as you point out, we can maybe put it, you know, put it off another year, and then it's going to double. My point is, we're either going to take this seriously now or not. But if we take it seriously now, we're going to have a very different budget discussion, aren't we? Because we're going to be looking for $3 million that we don't see here yet, that we're not considering, if we're going to actually try to start to stay in pace with these increases. So, you know, I guess my question to me and to you is, do we want to, do we want to deal, start dealing with this right now, or do we want to wait?
Well, that's why I've been saying, I think we should at least look ahead five years and see where we see ourselves going. So we know how serious the problem is going to be in the next three or four years.
Well, we already know that. The reality is...
No, I'm not talking about just this. I'm talking about the entire revenue versus, versus cost. Because the gap, what I'd like to, what I'm interested to see is, is right now, we're balanced, but are we, what will we have to do to balance in the next few years to get that, that revenue line either up, like Jeff said, to, to the cost, or get the cost line down to the revenue?
Well, Mayor, the biggest impediment to doing that, actually, certainly, we can give you an estimate, but the biggest impediment to that will be, the single largest expense it's going to be is what you do with the labor negotiations next year. If you did even a cost of living, you know, that's going to be X. If you did other things, it's, you know, it could be a vastly different range of millions of dollars. So, without knowing that variable, a five-year estimate is basically just going to be a 3 or 4 percent in both revenues and expenses in each one, with this being added as well.
But we know we have this.
We know we have this, yes. So the real wild card is, what will council do with all the bargaining units that come up next year? That, that will be the definitive variable, which will determine your next five-year budget.
But in this budget, we need X amount of dollars if we want to keep up.
Yes. And that, and I would say that also, that will also affect that number, what happens in, in the pension, because as salaries go up, that number goes up. So even if you do a very basic COLA, you know, probably, you know, we do it with a basic COLA and do a five-year projection. That way, that might be a reasonable way to do it.
Which is more justification of what we've said last year and this year, we need to keep our reserves up.
I'm all for that.
Yep. Anybody over here? Councilmember Mills? I'm sorry, Mayor Potem?
No, I just was asking a question, if, if we're only talking about this, are we talking about other parts of the budget? Because I have questions on-
Actually, you're, any portion of the budget.
I mean, your presentation on the budget is finished?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, I'll, I'll ask after you then.
Um, so, so, if I'm looking at, I'm looking at page three on the presentation. We look at our adopted budget, this current year, '16, '17, and projected. So, our adopted budget showed, uh, a, a reserve, when we got all done with it, at 15.68 percent. Is that, am I reading this right, Jeff? For our, for the adopted budget-
Yes, that is correct.
But the projected budget toward, which is at the end of June, correct?
Yes.
That is 21.10 percent.
Yes.
Right? So, we're doing better than we thought we were going to do as far as income.
That is correct.
There's a one-time in there, Jeff?
And, yes, there, there, there is some-
I told you we should have spent that other 50, that other 55 million.
There is some one-time revenue in there.
So, and then, um, but, but, and then in the, in the current, or, well, in the future budget, the '17, '18 budget, you're putting in a reserve of 19.8 ultimately. Um, and I'm, 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 uh, I'm still going back to the fact that I don't think we need to keep that large of a reserve, and we need to look at, uh, at investing some of that money in some capital improvements that are not going to get covered by Measure J, or, because we are, uh, we're falling apart in a, in a lot of areas. So, um, I think, I hope the, the council will keep coming on an open mind in that, because we do have issues that need to be dealt with. Um, and, and I just want to point that out, because, as you know, and as Jeff knows, I'm, I mean, I think that's, that amount of reserve is, for what you give up to get that, I don't think it's, it's worth it, when you could be solving issues that we, that we currently have, and capital projects, as you see in the current budget, is, is a big, a big zero. And so, um, I, I think we, we need to look at, at that, and that's an opportunity, uh, that's an opportunity to find some dollars, as we did last time. Uh, and, uh, but I still think even the project, the adopted one, at the 15.68, could have been lower. If you go back and look at our history, which, thank you very much for that sheet, um, that's page four, um, look at, look at where we've, we've ended up. And I know, we had, we adopted reserves in the adopted budget, where, where substantially less than what it ended up being at the end, at the end of the year. And I think, so, I'm not, I'm not saying it's wasted money, I'm just thinking, we need to put that money to work, uh, and stop avoiding some projects that we've been avoiding for years and years. And I've been sitting here for 16 years, and I'm seeing some of the same items on there. Although, the City Hall parking lot is not on there, thank you, Marcus. So, uh-
Thank you. Measure J, Measure J.
Measure J, that's right. But, but, um, I think, I think, I think that's something I hope the council looks at as we go through the, as we're here.
Councilman Coors?
And I will, of course, keep an open mind, but I think one of the things that increasing the reserve does is it addresses the fact that, unlike in prior years, we're having this more than doubling of our annual pension costs, and we need $14 million more annually. And if we spend down our reserves, we're sort of setting ourselves up for really drastic cuts potentially. So, I think we have to balance those, and, you know, Jeff, maybe you could weigh in. I know some cities, municipalities are sort of taking some of their reserves and putting them in like, a trust fund lockbox for pension. In my reading on this, and I've tried to do a decent amount, but, um, I will defer to your expertise on this, it seems the better thing to do is to have that in your reserves, because in case of crisis, you have some flexibility to do things, to jumpstart the economy, sort of, which former council did during the recession, that really had an impact. And so, I'd rather keep it in reserves than move it into a sort of lockbox kind of thing. But is that the right? Am I thinking correctly, or is there a better way to do this?
I, I agree with you. I mean, you, you can take dollars and put it in one of these special trusts, it can be invested more aggressively in that trust. There's nothing to stop us from doing that on our own, not that I recommend that. But you are absolutely right, once you put money into a trust, it can only be spent on one thing, and that's the, for the purpose of that trust.
Okay.
Uh, so you do lose financial flexibility.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Roberts?
I, I would just agree philosophically that high reserves are a good thing, and they're good for, for many purposes. But at this point, it is our one opportunity to potentially start to taking a whack at the CalPERS issue. And that's, that's at the most generous level. Um, we've all lived, or most of us have lived through, these economic downturns that can hit our city really hard on many levels. And if we think that things fall through the cracks right now with respect to capital improvements, in the next downswing, watch what happens. I think we're, we're, you know, with, we're, we're making huge progress on many of the capital improvements that had been put off for years. And we're blessed to be in the economic times that we're have, that we're in right now. We're blessed to have a staff that's able to, to find and move this money for us properly. And at the same time, we're maintaining a reserve, and I, and I think the best gift we can leave a future generation for Palm Springs, or even the next council cycle, is reserves. And, um, it is, it is a gift, a kiss that we can blow forward on some of these nightmares that they'll face, particularly with CalPERS. Um, you know, Dr. Reddy and I have discussed this level of reserves, and, you know, he comes from the place I would expect, which is, well, we can sure solve a lot of these problems if we don't have to have these reserves at this level. But I think that the problems that we're dealing with right now, the issues that we're looking at funding are important, but we're, we're sitting already with a balanced budget, so we're really still talking about the extras at this point. And anyway, I guess that's a long way of saying I support us maintaining these higher reserves that, that we've been able to, to find and hold on to.
Mayor Potem?
Yeah, I, I don't, I think that we are also not talking about something which we, we have, one of the, one of the things in the packet was the cost centers. And I'm, I'm, I, I'm not quite sure how we come up with these cost centers, uh, what is cost centers and what is not cost centers. But in the cost centers, if you look down, I mean, and some of them are very misleading. I'm, I'm on this single page that was given out. Um, and, and some of those, some of those places where we have, like, what we talked about earlier, where the convention center has a shortfall of $5 million, um, the, 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 uh, the tourism has a, has a shortfall of $2 million, or any of those shortfalls. I, I, by the way, I don't believe the animal shelter should be on that list, because I think that's a, no, it is a service, and just like I don't think the fire department or the police department or anything like that should be on that list. It's a service that this city has to provide.
But they all cost money. I mean, all their, all these are-
Yeah, but they're not, no, but those, the, the rest of those things are not on here. So, so, that's all I'm saying, is that's a necessary service. If we weren't doing it, if you look down below, you'll see it would be costing us close to $1 million anyway, if we were sending it out to the county, and we wouldn't be getting nearly half the service. And so, so I'm looking at just the rest of those things and thinking, okay, we're, we're a million dollars short on, and let's start with the first one, which is the golf course. And all I'm saying is, in, in, in what I do budgeting for my organization, I look at my cost centers, and I looked at, and I look at, how can I make them more profitable? Because cost centers does not mean they should cost you money, it means that it's just a way of budgeting of, of income and expense into certain categories. And so, if we, we, we've never, I don't think we've ever had, and maybe we've looked at them individually, I know at one point, we did, we had the golf, um, course, uh, subcommittee that looked at how, you know, we could improve that, and it went from us being in the hole, I think, $700, and maybe Mr. Bills is going to correct me on this, to now we're in the hole a million, over a million dollars. So, we, we, if we, if we look at some of the things at the library, why are we short $498,000? Are there things, and I'm not saying there are things, but are there things we could do at the library that would increase the revenues into the library by $500,000? And, and if we look at all of these, all of these things that we have on the list, and see if there's any way, how do we increase, you know, I mean, in, in tourism, in the visitor center and all of that, how do we increase? And we talked a little bit about the bus, because we've got the bus that has an $875,000 shortfall. Okay, how do we increase that? And I, the subcommittee did say they can come up with some advertising things. I, at one point, thought that we should be charging a buck, uh, to get on the bus, you know, and, and, and I, I think that that's also a way for us to look at, in a way that in business, in business people look at, is when something has a shortfall, you figure out either how to eliminate, you eliminate it, if it, if it's not providing an essential thing, or you figure out, how do you increase the revenue so that you reduce the cost, the, the shortfall? And I don't think we've ever looked at all of these to see if they're, you know, done an analysis of what we could possibly do to do that. We just, we just accept the fact that the skate park's going to cost us $160,000. So, why wouldn't we figure out how it's not going to cost us $160,000, rather than accept it? And so, I mean, that's something I'd, I'd like for us to look at, uh, and, and theorize about how, how do, how do we reduce some of that?
That's what I mentioned earlier, like, like the swim center, too, is 590,000 that we lose, so, that costs us over, so that's why I think we need to look at exactly user fees for these different-
Right.
... facilities.
I'd love to know what the original golf course subcommittee came up with, because the over a million dollars for the golf courses has always made my head spin. And, um, I'd love to hear from the original subcommittee on that, if they're here.
Well, it used to, actually, it was significantly more than that in prior years, I think.
No, it went down to 700,000 in one of the years. When, when, when actually Councilmember Mills and Councilmember Hutchinson were on that subcommittee, it went down to 700. So, to then see it back up to a million something, I'm not understanding why.
Wasn't there some water damage a couple of years ago, and there was some money that had to be borrowed and is being paid back?
Well, that, that was part of the issue, the flood. And then, you know, obviously, you lost some revenue, significant revenue then as well. So, it's fluctuating, it used to be about 3 million, um, but we've gotten that down significantly. Now, that, that contract is coming due, and on your agenda next week is a request for a subcommittee, uh, so we can start having some discussions on renewal, or go out to bid, or what we want to, want to do in terms of, of the golf course.
Thanks for volunteering, JR.
And you know, we'll just all be lining up for that subcommittee, Doctor. You could do it right now, I'm sure.
Yeah, no, and, and we talked about this a little bit, and the budget subcommittee is really looking at, and sort of, that's what I think this list is meant to, to do, right? Is this is what it costs us, obviously, right? We're not in the business of making money. Um, so, things are going to cost more than we get sometimes, but, right? That's what services are, but, and I don't know what direction you need from council, Dr. Reddy, and, you know, and I appreciate having this, because, um, you know, in my view, we shouldn't be subsidizing recreation for non-Palm Springs residents. Maybe people who work in Palm Springs, because they need, you know, if we're going to run childcare programs, which I think is a separate conversation, I'd love your opinion on, and liability to that, and whether we should be doing that, but, you know, what, what fees can adjust, you know, giving discounts or free things for Palm Springs residents, to me, is very different than having them free to anyone who wants to use them. And, so, I think looking at some of those makes a lot of sense. So, there are things, in your experience, that we should be looking at. And, and what direction do you need from us? Because I think that-
Sure.
We can all talk about it, but if we don't tell you any direction, it doesn't help you bring something back to us.
Well, I would see, you know, budgeting is always sort of aligning, you know, what's, what's required of cities to do versus what's expected, and we have a big gap between required and expected, which is okay, because we're really a full-service city. So, what we can do on the fees is, we can create a menu, from a solutions perspective, create sort of a menu of fee increases, uh, and bring that for you to consider, and that can be part, part of the continued budget discussion.
I, I also believe that Councilman Coors makes a compelling argument about those using our services that don't live here, and, and if, we can do an analysis on that, um, and i- if we even have the numbers of this, of who's using these services, and if there is a well of money there that could help offset the costs.
You know, and the other, the other area you may want to consider is, obviously, you have a significant amount that you give away to, in, in grants and sponsorships. I mean, you could start there and save probably 3/4 of a million dollars a year, uh, right there. I mean, so, when you, someone starts talking about what's required and what's, what's discretionary, I mean, that is probably your largest pot of discretionary dollars that you could take a look at.
Which was what? I'm sorry.
The grants and sponsorships.
Almost 800,000 that we give away.
But if, you know, you know, I think if you look at what, what Councilmember Mills talked about, and I'll just look at the Plaza Theater. The Plaza Theater is something that could be a major moneymaker for us. And by spending the money to, to renovate that facility, and then being able to, to use it as a, as an income source, or finding somebody to do that, but instead, it's costing us $26,000 a year, and that's, I'm assuming, for security service or whatever.
Just maintenance.
Maintenance. So, I mean, I think there's a number of things on here that we, you know, that we, we should be, we should be looking at, um, instead of just accepting, okay, it costs us $1,056,000 so that we have a golf course, you know?
And, you know, I think, um, I think the city manager's interviewing, or getting close to interviewing, the new fundraising director position, and I think there are a lot of opportunities, you know, Mayor Potem fought on those things, you know, there are naming rights, there's-
Right.
More grants, there are sponsorships that, that position can really go after. So, we can't count on that, but we can be hopeful. Um, I did want to ask one other question, and this is probably of Jeff, when Eddie, when Eddie's done, excuse me. Jeff, if, uh, you know, none of us want to ever make cuts, right? That's given. And we'd like to provide more services. There's lots of infrastructure and other things we like to do. Um, and we had a little talk about this, but not really flushed out that much, is revenue generation, right? Um, and, you know, we have some real potential as we move forward with, you know, the expansion of cannabis manufacturing cultivation, and we probably need to be looking at, you know, a measure for the ballot on that. Can you share some other ideas that council might want to be talking about on revenue generation? Is that appropriate at this point? Dr. Reddy?
That can be part of the fun discussion, too, of, with fee increases. I mean, obviously, you've got everything from, you know, a sales tax, your TOT tax, uh, you know, utility users tax, uh, those things. So, th- those are all possibilities, they require votes, um, and it's just a question if you would want to place those kinds of items on the ballot.
Well, we are going to, as a subcommittee, for the cannabis subcommittee, we are going to have to place something on the ballot regarding the tax for, because we're, we're going to be, after 2018, at the beginning of 2018, we're going to have some real responsibility in, in, in collecting our, our tax for cultiv- in, in, in collecting our tax for cultivation and manufacturing, and all the things that come with the legalization of cannabis in the state. And so, that, or the subcommittee's already talking about that. But there should be other areas besides just that, and besides just the regular areas of increasing the fees.
Right. So, I mean, you know, in one area that's just been, you mentioned, was sales tax, right? And don't really understand this that well, but there's sort of a cap, or how much it could be. And if the county comes in for sales tax increase, they could get it, or if we don't have it. Does that how it works, or how exactly does that work?
There's a local sales tax limit of 3%. And I believe that right now, we're at 2.5%.
Okay.
So first come, first served. So if the county were to choose to apply an additional tax, then that eliminates our opportunity. So.
Can they do that without voting on it?
No, this is all, we're all required voting.
It's sort of whoever does it first gets it. And that's 6, 7 million dollars, right?
Yes.
That would be increased revenue. So it may just be something for us to talk about at the next meeting, if there are revenue generation ideas we want to consider.
It seems to me that we need a combination. We need, you know, there's, there are potentially some areas for cuts, and, you know, in, politically, it's very difficult to do cuts and things when we're doing so well in the economy, and that's much harder politically. But, you know, as we can, as we continue to provide this astonishing level of services that we do provide, we really should be looking at cuts as well. And there just are some areas of it, and, as well as some new revenue sources. So, you know, we, we have this conversation every year.
Yeah, but, you know, I think in, in, and I'm a firm believer, when you go, when you want to do a budget, you don't look down first at what to cut. You look first and spend a great deal of effort on what to increase. And, and when you look at what you have to increase, because there's, there's not a lot of fat in our budget. I mean, our, our police, our fire, our, our staff, they're not, you know, getting rich working for the city of Palm Springs. And, and so, and we're not, you know, we don't have any lavish things that we do as a city. And so, you know, I think that when, when, when we had to cut that budget, $12 million in, or 14 million, whatever it was, in 2008, or '07, '08, or whenever, that, we had, I mean, it was tiered time, because it was, we were cutting, we were changing people's lives, we were cutting things that, that were, were horrible, because there wasn't enough fat to cut. We, we couldn't cut the free meals for all citizens in the city program, you know, we, you know, we, we didn't have those kinds of, you know, champagne for every person at Christmas time, or whatever. We didn't have any of those, you know, any great programs to cut. So, so I really want to emphasize to everybody that we really need to look at the increase side of the budget as strongly as we look at the, at the, at where we, we could be more conservative.
I was going to say, and most of the things we talked about are increase in fees, increase in revenue.
Right.
Right? I haven't heard anyone suggest cutting anything yet.
Yeah.
There's been some discussion of, is the Buzz a worthwhile expense, to get some more input on, which we will, but for the most part, right, we don't want to make cuts if we can avoid them, but we, we want to also avoid the situation you were faced with in 2008, where you have all this major cuts you have to make, because you don't have reserves, and you don't have the increase of revenue, when the economy's good. Because that's the time you can put money away. The economy's bad, you don't have that luxury. And so, it's balancing that with doing the things we want to do, additional capital improvements and other things, as we go through this.
And, and there's also trade-offs. I mean, we may have, have discussed whether we, to do this, we want to get rid of this. I mean, Councilman Mayor Portim talked about the Plaza Theater. I mean, we have to look, if we did do it with the Buzz, would that help fund getting the Plaza Theater open? Would that be a better economic driver than the Buzz? I mean, those are kind of things we have to look at.
Well, you know, it's funny that we're talking about the Plaza Theater, so, you know, Councilman Mills and I have that as subcommittee, and I've actually spent some time on that recently, with a new subcommittee that's been made up from the HSPB. And, you know, I tend to believe, because I've seen it and been a part of it in the past, that things like that could potentially come from private fundraising, and separate sponsorships. So, you know, I'm keeping my mind open to that. I, I, I also frankly see something like the Plaza Theater, it's very low priority. When we're having to deal with homeless problems and issues like that, and fund some very seriously needed things, I see the Plaza Theater as, it sort of falls to the bottom, but I'm not going to let it go. You know, Councilwoman Foote, does the Plaza Theater have the potential to make a lot of money? Well, maybe, but that's after the 5 to 10 million dollars it's going to take to make it usable again.
And I would go to say to you, the Staples Center, which is, has a name on it, called the Staples Center, didn't have a lot of potential either. But Staples put in the kind of money that it took to do that. And so, that's all I'm saying, is we, we need to, I'm not saying that the Plaza Theater would make a million dollars a day, but what I'm saying is that it is, it is a potential moneymaker, rather than a potential money drain. I see it, you know, and would it make a dollar? I don't know, you know?
Well, but, but again, to get, you're, you're right, we're spending $56,000 on basically what's a surplus building. But in order to not spend $56,000, we'd have to spend about five, four plus. And, and I, by million or plus, but I think that you're right, I mean, there are lots of opportunities that we're going to look at. And again, I have, I have my own experience doing that. I love that you use the Staples, you know, what is that, a, how many-seat theater?
No, but I mean, it's, I'm using it because, I'm, I'm using it because it has a name of a business on it.
Well, we'll find, we'll find a name to put on it, but it's going to be a very different kind of figure than what the Staples Center, what Staples paid for it. Let's put it this way, if Staples came to, to name the Plaza, it's going to be a very different figure.
Yeah, but I think you missed my point. My point was that, well, I wasn't saying we shouldn't, I wasn't saying we should do away with the Buzz and do the Plaza, I was saying that's an example of trade-offs we may have to make.
Right.
Because some things maybe have to cut, and some things we want to increase. It's all trade-offs.
Could I suggest that we also have people who are interested in doing public comment that we might want to?
Are we finished?
Is there anything you need from us, Dr. Reddy, or is this?
No, that's fine. Public comment would be good.
We could go on online without you like this.
Yeah, we can.
We've done it before.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
So we're looking to our audience to come solve these problems.
Please solve these issues. Thank you.
Yeah, if anybody got any great ideas, we're waiting for you now.
Especially those of you who are running for city council, here's your moment.
Yep. Okay.
That's everyone.
Okay, are we completed with the staff discussion? Okay. Next item, public comments. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on Measure J Commission, well, they're all gargled on, on, on this agenda item only, which is the budget. Two minutes will be assigned for each speaker, and how are we going to do the counting on those, the time?
There's a clock.
We have a clock here, just like we did.
Okay, all right.
Super. We can see it on the screen.
And they can see it in the audience.
Great. Okay, the first speaker is Henry Hampton of Palm Springs, followed by Mindy Reed of Palm Springs, and then that will be, then Debbie Alexander, all Palm Springs.
There's a timer right here, if you hit the button, I guess.
Yeah.
There it goes. All right, council, Chief Reyes, a contingent of Palm Springs officers and victims of the families of 10 fallen California police officers, were in Sacramento on Monday to commemorate a memorial to fallen police officers. The chief was the keynote speaker, and mentioned the hardship of working in a watered-down justice system.
Mr. Hampton, we're supposed to be speaking on budget issues.
Yeah, and that's what it is. It's about, it's about, it's just about.
Get to your point soon.
Okay, so it's about, I would venture that the watered-down justice that he was talking about doesn't need to be watered down here in Palm Springs, and I think that if the chief needs additional officers on staff to, to service the needs of the community, that that has to be a number-one priority for us. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hampton. And next is Mindy Reed of Palm Springs, followed by Debbie Alexander, and then Joey Brown Meredith, although I think I saw Joey leave. Okay?
Do I have to push this?
No, I think it's, no.
First of all, I wanted to say thank you for the bike pass. As you can see, it, it does have a real impact, so thank you for the money from the budget that you guys have committed to that, and are continuing to do that. I would like to ask that you do consider approving the police request for some more downtown officers for daytime. You know, we have a lot of, a lot more burglary, a lot more theft than you guys would think, people exposing themselves to, you know, people in the dressing rooms, just a lot of things happening down there, as well as the transient problem. While it's huge at night, it's even worse during the day, is when we have most of the problems, when we have to call for assistance for the officers to come and, and do something. And I think that having some presence down there from them during the daytime would make our tourists feel a little bit safer, and just because they could see somebody, and the response time would be quicker. I don't know, I don't know where the money goes for all the parking tickets, and all of those kind of things, but one thing that I see downtown constantly, and I don't know if we can do it, would be a, if you guys put in some traffic cameras, there's probably, and you've probably seen it sitting at the restaurant, you know, 10, 12 people every single day, turning, running red lights, turning the wrong direction on the one-way. And that would be a pretty inexpensive way, because there's no manpower required, it's just the initial investment. And if that money can come into our coffers to help pay for those officers, I think it would be a, a great idea to consider. And I don't think you would get very much flashback from the locals, because we all want to be safe when we're crossing the street, and we know the risk, it's going to piss a few tourists off, but, you know, we want to save their lives, too. We've had too many pedestrians killed, so.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Reed. Next speaker is Debbie Alexander, followed by Joey Brown Meredith, I think is gone, and then Lisa Middleton.
Hi, my name is Debbie Alexander. I have P. Bays Café downtown, right next to the Plaza Theater. And I just want to talk on, you know, protecting tourists, protecting tourism, and in essence, that's also protecting the tax revenue. I had my place for 23 years. What I want to talk about is, you know, we open at 6:00 a.m., we close sometimes at 1:00 a.m. We're sort of the canary in the cave down there. We sort of see what's happening. And what I want to tell you about the temperature downtown is that, you know, if you imagine a graph, you know, we're increasing the shops, we're going to have the Kimpton, we're going to have all these shops downtown, we're going to increase the amount of people downtown, we need to be increasing the, the police coverage. And right now, just, you know, an example, today we had someone washing themselves in the Sunny Bono pool there. Tomorrow, I'm getting a restraining order set up against a panhandle that's been harassing me and my staff for about three years. You know, my neighbor just had a, his window bashed in and lost eight and a half thousand dollars worth of product, and he's only owned the place for three weeks. So what's happened is there is a, for nonviolent crimes, there is a delay in response time. And it's, it's pretty noticeable to the point of, my vendor was the one who called about the guy washing himself in the, you know, the, the fountain, because we know there's a three-hour response time, we're not calling on the day shift. And what I want you guys to really realize is that, you know, just like we all see, if there's a, a fire in Banning, it's a Palm Springs fire. If there's an earthquake in Joshua Tree, it's a Palm Springs, Palm Springs earthquake. If you have one incident happen downtown, it's going to directly affect your tourism, and it's going to affect your, your tax revenue. So if you want to say that this is like a, what do you call it, a soft, I like that, you know, if you can increase the amount of cops down there, you're going to be able to keep your revenue coming in. If you have one incident hit internationally, that's going to kill off your revenue, it's going to take it down, you know, eight percentage points, you know, or something like that. Anyway, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Joey Brown Meredith is gone, I believe, and our last speaker, if anyone else wishes to speak, they need to put a card into the city clerk immediately, is Lisa Middleton of Palm Springs.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, City Council, a couple of broad comments regarding the budget, and then a couple of very specific ones. Our goal is to have a 10% to 20% reserve. It is just simple logic, that in years where our economy is booming, we should be closer to the 20% level, and closer to the 10% in years when we are in a distressed economy. So I congratulate City Council on staying close to the 20% reserve level. Secondly, there was a lot of conversation regarding pension reform and pension issues, and I could not agree more with Director Keel with his comment, that it was mistakes made in Sacramento 25 years ago that we are paying for today. We will continue to pay for those mistakes, but we also had in 2013, the California Pension Reform Act. And as our workforce becomes increasingly employees hired after 2013, we will find that our costs are going to begin to go down. We have an issue to deal with, that we'll have to deal with over the next decade, but increasingly in the future, there is relief on the horizon. Lastly, one PS, which I used to be the chair of, worked very, very hard on issues related to pedestrian, bike, and traffic safety. That's where the origin of the community projects came from. I continue to be very strongly supportive of the actions that Measure J took on those community projects, and on the $3 million that are dedicated for street repairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Middleton. Okay, now seeing no more speakers, we will close public comments. Next, council member comments, requests, and reports. Anything from anyone?
I don't have anything.
We did that. Yeah, we did that, yes. Okay, seeing none, going, going, gone. Okay, we will adjourn. The city council will adjourn to the Downtown Park Special Workshop on Thursday, May the 11th, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. Palm Springs Convention Center, smoke through A through E. We'll see you here then. Thank you.
We're just staying here, then.